Hello, speaking of order, notice of special meeting. City Council Chamber, Grove City Hall, August fifth, twenty twenty four, five P M. You'd all rise for the prayer and pledge, please.
There you go.
Good evening, my name is Tina Martinez, I live in Beaumont, Texas. I am the Senior Vice Commander for VFW Post Forty Eight Twenty in Port Angeles, Texas. I would like to say congratulations to the Mayor Chris Bourne on being selected as the best council member for twenty twenty four by the readers of Board Office News.
Prayer, please, please.
Yes. Heavenly Father, we come to you today for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this Grove City Council meeting. Help us engage in this meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow as a group and nurture those bonds of community and collective agreement. Bless us with your grace, Lord God, and give this mayor and these leaders wisdom in making good decisions that affect the city of Grove, Texas, to remind us that we do good here today and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth and for greater glory of you. And for the service of our community, we ask these things in your name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm to be roll call, City Clerk.
Mayor Bourne.
Here.
Mayor President McAdams.
Here.
Councilmember Dugus.
Here.
Councilmember Oliver.
Here.
Councilmember Dugus.
Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Do we have any reports from City Manager?
All guys for the stuffiness of the room, we, the air conditioner for this, this part of the building went out over the weekend and we had somebody come fix it. Probably, I guess, it turned out temporarily, we got it running this afternoon, but it's gone out again. And so it's gonna be a little, probably be a little bit warmer, it's gonna be all on.
Comment? Any citizens comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Kent Lofton, VFW Forty Eight Twenty, thirty one hundred Eugene Avenue, Grove Sixty seven, seven six twenty nine, Ward Four. We'd like to talk a little bit about the Iraq War, sometimes called the Second Gulf War. It was a protracted armed conflict in Iraq from two thousand and three to two thousand and eleven. It began with the invasion, invasion of Iraq by the United States National Coalition that overthrowing the Baath's government of Saddam Hussein. The conflict continued for much of the next decade as an insurgency emerged to oppose the coalition forces and the post-invasion Iraqi government. U S troops were officially withdrawn in two thousand and eleven. After Desert Shield, Desert Storm, the United States had hoped for the defeat of Iraqi forces would create an uprising and depose Saddam Hussein. And that just didn't happen. Operation Iraqi Freedom began with the objective of ending the regime of Saddam Hussein as well as finding destroy weapons of mass destruction. A lot of people think that there were no weapons of mass destruction. I talked to a lot of people that were there, including myself, and there was weapons of mass destruction, they just moved them. The operation began in March of two thousand and three, and Baghdad fell on April ninth of that same year. By two thousand and two, Iraq had long been in violation of the Gulf War settlement. Iraq had agreed to weapons inspections by the United Nations and they denied that agreement by refusing access to military bases for weapons inspection and continually violating no-fly zones in that region. President George Bush referred to Iraq, Iran, and North Korea as the axis of evil in the State of the Union on twenty ninth of January, two thousand and two. In November of two thousand and two, the United Nations Security Council passed Resolution fourteen forty one warning of serious consequences if Iraq did not offer unrestricted access to the U N weapons inspectors. Calling a failed attempt to appeal to the United Nations for a mandate to invade Iraq, the United States, along with forces from Australia, Denmark, the Netherlands, Poland, and Great Britain, launched Operation Iraqi Freedom on the nineteenth of February, March, two thousand and three. On May first, two thousand and three, President George Bush ordered an end to major combat operations. And the Coalition Provisional Authority was established as the first of several successive transitional governments. Unfortunately, the armed conflict was far from over, and I know because I was there in two thousand and eleven. On December thirteenth, two thousand and three, Saddam Hussein was captured by the United States Special Forces. Hussein was captured, tried, bound, gilded, and executed on thirty December, two thousand and six, and it was believed that the insurgency would cease then. Conditions in Iraq continue to deliberate. The media, the military, and the government began calling the insurgency a civil war in which the United States should not take a position. The sectarian violence reached a crisis point in two thousand and six. This led to the United States to increase the number of troops deployed in Iraq by twenty thousand, known as the surge, in two thousand and seven. On December eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, the United States completely withdrew its military forces from Iraq, calling a gradual withdrawal that began with the announcement by President Obama on February, two thousand and nine. Over forty-four hundred Americans were killed during Iraq War, and nearly a hundred thousand Iraqis were killed in the conflict that lasted over eight years. The United States ended its combat mission on nine December, twenty twenty one. Leaving twenty-five hundred troops deployed mainly in Al-Sadr Air Base, Camp Victory, and Al-Bassir Air Base. They continued service trainers and advisors to Iraqi forces. I know that I cleaned that place out once in two thousand and eleven and took everything out of there that we had there in the nine southern provinces of Iraq. Couple of years later, they said, we're going back, and I said, no, I'm not. When I finish the job, it's finished, and if you mess it up, that's on you. They did end up going back, and we still have people there, and it's a day of shame. Okay, because we're not doing many good, and we're, we're telling them the answers to the test, they're, they're still not passing the test. It's a mess, so thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and City Council.
Any citizens comments?
Is it such a thing that you can protest against the tax, or is this?
You can speak. This is your time, yes, ma'am. Now, we will have public hearings where we'll talk about the appropriation of the outstanding proposed budget, but this is under citizen comments. Okay, moving on. I'm number seven, will be received the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five tax rate calculations from Jefferson County Tax Assessor Collector. Everyone have a copy? Was there anything you want to say about this?
Uh, what's the, yes, sir, Mayor Council. Jefferson County Appraisal District certified the role of property values, that was submitted to Jefferson County Tax Assessor Collector's office, they're the ones that did these calculations, and I'll be one pro- The Jefferson County Appraisal District certified the values of all the properties in the city of Grove and all the other values in Jefferson County. They submitted those values to the Tax Assessor Collector's Office. The Tax Assessor Collector's Office then carried out these calculations on the report you have been presented, which calculates the no new revenue, the voter approval, and the de minimis tax rates. All the calculations are presented, as we've received them, these are the calculations, we're basing everything on the tax rate and budget.
Where do we get a copy of that?
Give you a copy, if you'd like to request a copy of the file, we'll be happy to, just do an open record request, we'll give you that. It's also on the website. I don't remember, we deliberate an act on the August nineteenth, twenty twenty four as the date for the adoption of the proposed City of Grove's fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five appropriation ordinance. We'll need a motion and a second.
Make a motion that we deliberate an act on the date of August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four, the adoption of the proposed City of Grove's two thousand and twenty four, twenty five appropriation ordinance.
Your second.
Motion and second to deliberate an act on August twenty, or nineteenth, twenty twenty four as the date for the adoption of the proposed City of Grove fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five appropriation ordinance, do you have any questions? Or an explanation?
The charter requires that we have an appropriation pass. It's essentially the same thing as the budget, but this is required by the charter. So this is the ordinance, which in conjunction with the budget, set all the expenditures off the spy department.
Who's that for to me? And then language them.
The only thing that's on the table right now is the date for that meeting. Any other questions? No questions, vote on the motion, Mayor votes aye, Mayor Pro Tim McAdams. Councilmember Oliver. Councilmember Dugus. Motion passes. I have number nine, be deliberate an act on the August nineteenth, twenty twenty four as the date for the adoption of the proposed City of Grove's fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
Make a motion, we deliberate an act on August nineteenth, twenty twenty four as the date for adoption of the proposed City of Grove's fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
Your second.
Motion and second to deliberate an act on August nineteenth, twenty twenty four as the date for the adoption of the proposed City of Grove's fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget, are there any questions?
Mayor Council, this is required by the state that we pass a budget, this is the date, you all proposing to say.
No questions? No other questions, we'll vote on the motion, Mayor votes aye, Mayor Pro Tim McAdams. Councilmember Oliver. Councilmember Dugus. Motion passes. I'm Tim, deliberate an act on August nineteenth, twenty twenty four as the date to hold a public hearing at Grove City Council Chamber to review the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five tax rate and increase.
I make a motion to deliberate an act on August nineteenth, twenty twenty four as a date to hold a public hearing at Grove City Council Chambers to review the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five tax rate and increase.
Your second.
Motion and second to deliberate an act on August nineteenth, twenty twenty four as the date to hold a public hearing at Grove City Council Chamber to review the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five tax rate and increase. Any questions?
Mayor Council, this is also required by the state, this will set the tax rate for the properties in the city of Grove. This is a public hearing to review the tax rate, and here comes.
Is there any questions that we can oppose these rates, or is there any?
This is just the date for that public hearing.
At the public hearing, what can be done?
You can speak your mind.
You can say I don't like this, or I do like this.
That's right. Are there any other questions? If you know the question, the bubble motion, Mayor votes aye, Mayor Pro Tim McAdams. Councilmember Oliver. Councilmember Dugus. Motion passes. Out of eleven, deliberate an act on the proposed tax increase in rate of point six zero one nine two four per one hundred for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget by record vote.
Make a motion to deliberate an act of proposed tax increase in rate of point six zero one nine two four per one hundred for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five budget.
Your second.
A motion and second to deliberate an act on the proposed tax increase in rate of point six zero one nine two four per one hundred for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget by record vote, do you have any questions?
Mayor Council, as required by state law, this is the proposed tax rate that you're voting on, the final vote will be on August nineteenth.
You're saying this is the proposed, this is not the final vote?
That is correct, but you have the vote to authorize a vote.
Okay, did y'all get that, you have your vote time?
What if you don't want to vote on that?
This is our vote.
This is our place, it shows how much money this is gonna bring in and what it's gonna be spent on.
The budget is available for anyone to pick up at the office, is it on the website?
It is on the website, yes.
Yes.
Can you explain that again, make sure everybody understands what this vote we're fixing to take is?
There's been a budget prepared by staff and presented by the City Manager to the City Council and to the City Clerk that includes out all the revenues, including the proposed tax rate in, in front of you, as well as all the expenditures by department, by line item, and various graphs and other information to help better understand what those expenditures are for. Of all those, all that information is on the city website. This item specifically, as required by state law, Council has to authorize itself to vote on this proposed tax rate contained in the budget. That proposed tax rate vote will be on August nineteenth, as it's standing right now.
Basically, this just sets the date for the vote.
But it's also saying this is the tax rate we will be voting on.
And is there an option, if you, that that can be changed, or is, is this set, is there no option to change?
There is always an option to change, yes.
So what do citizens need to do to have our leadership revisit this budget in that fit of the citizens, in our pocketbook?
Contact them personally, talk to them, voice your opinions and or talk about it in the public hearing.
The public hearings, the public hearings come up next.
It's next.
They're next, they're not now. Okay, the public hearings are next, it's not now, but we have to vote to take, to go ahead and vote on August nineteenth.
Okay.
It's procedure, basically.
Any other questions? No other questions, vote on the motion, Mayor Pro Tim McAdams. Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Dugus.
Aye.
Motion on three. We'll transition into the public hearing. Uh, we want to establish appropriation. City of Grove, Texas, notice of a public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Grove, Texas, will hold a public hearing Monday, August fifth, twenty twenty four at five P M. at City Hall, thirty-nine forty-seven Lincoln Avenue, Grove, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five appropriation ordinance. All interested persons are welcome to attend a copy of the entire City Manager budget estimate is available for inspection in the City Manager's office at City Hall, thirty-nine forty-seven Lincoln Avenue, Grove, Texas, or in the city website at W W W dot C I Grove, Texas, dot com. City of Grove, City Hall is wheelchair accessible and accessible parking spaces are available. Requests for accommodations or interpretive services may be made forty-eight hours prior to all meetings. Please contact the City Secretary's Office at four oh nine nine six oh five seven seven three, or fax at four oh nine nine six three 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 eight eight for further information. All right. We recognize the individual making the request, this is a request by City Council. Correct.
Correct.
Request by City Council for the appropriation ordinance, which is required by the charter. Uh, are there any questions from City Council? All right, let's see. I'm sure you can skip all these. Go down to number seven. Citizens of Grove who wish to speak in support of the request. And there is a sign in sheet for anyone who's speaking in support of the request for the appropriation ordinance. All right.
Does everyone understand the appropriation, okay, could we please explain what the appropriation ordinance is, what it is for? And why we have to have a public hearing?
Sure.
Some people do not understand.
Um, the appropriation, again, is required by the city charter. It lists out all the total expenses by department within the city, how much money is going to be spent within each department. The charter also requires a public hearing to be held. It also has some publication notices, which will be Thursday this week. So that's what this, what this is about. This is certainly apart from the budget, which is required by the state, but is generally covering similar subjects.
This is gonna allow us to spend money, correct?
That is correct, yes.
For the proposed items on the budget.
That is correct, yes. It's just not laid out in as much detail as the budget itself is laying.
And are y'all gonna vote on it?
There is no vote tonight, this is just a public hearing, so that everyone has a chance to speak.
Okay, well, when do we get to speak?
I'm assuming you're against it, so then that'll be the next time.
Okay.
It's coming up.
I have number eight, will be citizens of Grove who wish to speak against the request. Everyone who speaks will have to sign in, name and address, also tell us that. And this is on the proposed expenditures for the appropriation ordinance based off of the budget that's put together. Anyone wish to speak against the request?
He was, he's signing now?
Yes, ma'am, it's at the podium, if you want to talk, you come up to the podium and you sign in, and then you speak your mind.
Okay. But I don't, I thought that was next week.
This is the appropriation ordinance.
Yeah, this is not the budget, this is the-
It is still.
Oh, okay, it's, uh, what I'm here for is to speak again, well, explain to me. Okay, Nancy Seeger's, sixty-five hundred Thirty Second Street. And I feel like all of y'all are talking over our heads. We don't understand all of these words and all. The main thing I think that we are interested in is, yes, the budget, but what is this with a street tax and other things like that? So I don't understand, where do we go to talk to you about that? I mean, am I the only one that understands all that, I mean? So, I mean, I've lived in Grove all my life, and I love Grove and all, but it has gone down so much. And if I understand right, this tax as a street tax, and, and I'm not for sure about the businesses that have to do it, but we don't have enough businesses in Grove now. And so are we gonna have more people or leave them Grove? And this is a good city, but we need, well, I understand people, the races, um, I've worked in business and all. I know about business and we've got to run it. But, you know, there's some things we just need to be down to earth and explain things to us, thank you.
Carolyn Fountain, sixty-seven hundred Cooley, Grove. I just, I would just like a little bit further explanation, especially, I didn't get to look at the line item on the budget yet, but from what I saw on the things that were posted on certain places, there's nothing about streets. Is there any kind of streets that are street work that's going to be done?
There are line items for street repairs in the appropriations, yes, ma'am.
And what is repairs mean? Fill a pothole?
There are potholes to be filled, yes, ma'am.
But there's some streets that there's no way that you fill a pothole, that's gonna happen. So do we have any plans to do anything about that?
We have plans, but we have to find money first.
Is that what you're saying? There's no money?
For some of that, yes, ma'am, there's no money for some of that.
So when we stop and look at this budget line item veto, I mean, the line items that you've simply listed that I haven't got to look at yet. If we see that, um, if y'all looked at it as this is the best, best place to spend the money on everything, and I'm not sure about this hundred, how many big, what was this thing about this, it's study to be done about counting cars, what is that, can you explain that?
Is that in the appropriations?
No, it is not.
It's in the budget, that's not in the appropriations.
This is not, this is, that would be a workshop for the councils to discuss. Which is open to the public. See if they want to-
So you're not gonna discuss it on the next time?
It's not in the appropriations, so we can't.
But when I, when we go to the next call, that's the budget.
It's not in the budget either.
Not in the budget.
So it has to be done in a workshop at a different time.
Well, I thought everything, the money was spent, I'm supposed to be in- Well, I thought everything the money was spent, it's supposed to be in the budget?
There's no money in the budget to be spent on a consultant.
And why do we need the consultant? We have to ask that, right?
Because it's a new fee that requires, uh, evaluation of every property to determine what the ultimate, uh, fee would be charged to that property.
So we weren't, we're planning to do another, another fee, as opposed we're adding another fee onto the fees that we already paid, like for, now we have a fee at the water department. We have an extra fee on that that was never there before. I noticed that in the last couple of years, that's been happening, that fee. And now we're having another fee. Now we're gonna have a sewer increase and a water increase.
That's right.
And we don't have any, we can't do any objections too bad? Or is this my time to object right here, but it doesn't really matter whether I object or not?
Public hearings on the nineteenth.
On the nineteenth, okay, that's what I need to do.
Um, well, the budget workshop we had should be posted on YouTube. The one we just had, the budget workshop, where we went over every single thing on the budget?
Should be on the website.
It's on our website?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, if you want to go and view the budget workshop that we just had, I think it was two and a half hours long, we went over everything that the city, um, that the city was spending money on, uh, what each department requested and what they were given. But all of this has been discussed in that workshop. So if you want to go, uh, to our website and uh, click on YouTube, you should be able to find that budget workshop and listen to it, and, um, that should explain a little bit more for you and to give you some better perspective. Cause I know this can all be, uh, a little overwhelming.
It's also fiscal stop sign lives, is that in the next budget?
No, sir, they're not in this budget.
How much we spend for that?
If you wanna talk, we're talking about the appropriation ordinance today.
I guess they did the study, justified it.
So, what were you reporting?
Pointing on, anyone these sheets?
Uh, I think there's one this
It'll say appropriation ordinance.
Appropriation and opposed. Yes, it gets. Where's it, where's it?
Well, one of, we haven't gotten to the budget yet, we haven't gotten to the budget, uh, workshop, hearing, okay.
My name is Amber Hart Gray, six five six five Washington. I'm just gonna speak in real terms because I don't know all of the terms of this budget. I'm gonna go on an example of my household. I, I do the budget in my house. Um, I know how much my bills are. I make sure I work enough to do to pay those bills. Now, if I come up short one month because I spend too much, do I still pay myself to go get my new shoes? I don't. But this budget looks like whoever made this budget is. So, why do citizens have to pay for that person's pair of their new shoes when it's kind of a mess? And maybe it needs to be fixed up a little bit better.
So, our new shoes would be streets and sewers and drainage and water towers?
And is it all in the budget to fix these streets that we have?
We only do so much at one time.
I understand.
So we have to plan accordingly to fix things that need to be fixed immediately. But we still have to raise money to fix things.
Correct. So, what I'm saying is me, myself, like the people, I'm in charge of that budget in my household. So the people in charge of the city and that budget are getting raises. And I understand from my understanding, the city and those people probably got a mess when they were handling it, and I mean, I, I don't know what else to say but tough luck, like why is that on us? To fix someone else's mistakes? And pay for raises?
Mr. Mayor, you had a second comment about your budget. What does it cost per mile? Or?
Well, seventy five miles, right?
Seventy, seventy, seventy two to seventy five miles of streets, and, uh, the latest, uh, Troy could tell me it's probably going up, but uh, the last time we really talked about it, it was a little over a million dollars per mile to redo a street. We have seventy two miles worth of streets.
She's not talking about streets, she's talking about raises.
I understand. We still have to, we still have to maintain employees. We can't just cut all our employees.
I'll speak whenever you're down.
I'm not talking about, like
You also have to maintain people paying those salaries and people can't live here.
I understand a raise, like, uh, for the people who are especially your low level workers who are out there in the sun doing that street work. I have no opposition to that. What I have opposition to is people getting more of a raise than those people who's doing the work. Cause when my house and my budget runs short, I don't go get me new shoes. I just wear the shitty ones I got for the while. Sorry for my French, or whatever you wanna call it.
Mr. Cruz, there's a structure for the employees', um, salaries, right?
Correct, there is a compensation plan, various steps for every position.
Is this a step you're? Yes, we did not vote on a poll, so this is a step. So this is outlined in our handbook as to what you can get.
So we would have to change that.
When they hire in, this is an incentive that they that they, they get raises over a period of time. They work for each
Mm-hmm, that's what I'm saying.
Well, those that are talked about, they won't get anything. In the section.
So, are you, you're, are you opposed to the employees getting raised? Is that what you're saying?
Not all of the employees, I was just thinking it needs to be revisited and maybe people who are already making a ton of money probably don't need to line their pockets some more. Because the trash people can't even pick up trash at my road without digging in my asphalt. And then I have a pothole that I drive away, like, and then it comes, and everybody's doing their best with the tools that they are provided, but they might as well just put asphalt down into like this because the rain comes and it's coming out. So, I I just, it's not my job to figure out how for y'all to do things better. I'm just saying, please try to do better.
That was one of the reasons that I got on the city council to see what kind of difference I could make. Uh, here I am, I'm, I'm fighting.
Thank you.
That's where I stand.
Um, I, I think you, you, maybe you don't understand how the raises are done, um, Mr. Cruz, if you could explain it further for her? The employee's salary and how, and their raises, and you were talking about the people that have been a certain, a certain number of years, they're chopped off and they don't get the raise? Because they're chopped off at that particular amount of money, that particular position is paid?
Right, but positions have a stepping grade. Like, fire and police have, uh, bargaining agreement that regulates, uh, whoever's there, but every position has a stepping grade. And once an employee reaches the top of their grade, that position, the only other increase they, they ever get is when council gives a, a cost alone, uh, increase.
Which is evaluated every two years.
Right.
And, and the amount that, that the employees get, they have to be qualified to, for that position. Uh, so if we're gonna hire someone that's qualified and doing whatever the job title would be, we're gonna have to compete in those cities to, uh, try to hire the the best we can. So, that's where those, those numbers come in, uh, it's it's tough sometimes, I'll say that.
Right, right now, we have five vacancies in, in PD, I don't have any sworn officers, we have twenty three's capacity, twenty three, if, if we're fully staffed, we have five vacancies there. At fire, we've got, uh, twelve. Uh,
And there is money to pay those employees, providing you find them, and?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And right now, we have two vacancies in, in fire department. I mean, it's a, it's a tough labor market out there with with creating a hundred, uh, cities in this area plus the plants. Um, and there's a cost to recruiting. So, we pay lower, lower rate of pay and benefits. We have a constant turnover, there's costs recruiting. There's a loss of efficiency and effectiveness when you have, uh,
So there's high turnover, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that mean that they're probably in management?
When people, when people leave because they can get better pay elsewhere? No, that's not a management issue.
It's a money management, huh?
No, you lack the resources to compensate people fairly in the market.
I guess what would stop that is if that person was gonna be leaving because he could get better paid in another city, another job. If we could match that, then we could keep that person, so that would stop the turnover. So, so you could pay him more money, give him some incentive, uh, which is the, the step program. Uh, that, that has something looking forward to over the years, uh, as they work to the, to the city.
So how do Groves owners to get in this position, what we can pay public service workers, uh, coughing, you know, a good rate to keep them?
We don't have refineries that can put money on our coffers, like Port Neches, Port Arthur, uh, the businesses someone spoke about a while ago is it. We, we have discussed it, uh, about trying to generate more businesses in Groves, and uh, that's gonna be the thing. We gotta build it.
Well, the fire department and the police department have contracts with the city.
Right.
And they, and there are negotiations that go along with these contracts, and that's when their, um, their salaries, their pay raises, their um, the step program with it and all that is negotiated and the contract signed, and that's what will be a bye bye. The, the contract, Mr. Cruz, that you make up, you make, make up for us, the police department and the fire department make up the biggest part of that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Fire and police combined, uh, by far, the cost of those two departments are much more than
That's right.
Right, yeah, much more than all of the environmental taxes we collect over the course of a year. So everything else the city does is paid for through the other, uh, other fees, the sales tax.
Adam in Arsdale, six eight one eight, House Street Groves. Um, I guess my question is, it seems like a lot of the things that are being proposed are more reactive in nature, and I understand from the very little research that I've been able to do that you all have been handed messes, and you're trying to do your best to clean up these messes and, and that kind of thing, and I do appreciate that. My question is, a lot of the things that seem to be proposed often come across as react, reactive or reactionary to those potential, uh, problems. That creates a cyclical issue, uh, in that, in order to fix all of those problems that you were handed, you are, um, at, it is at the cost of the ones who are who, who are, are living here and, and paying for y'all to, to fix those things. Um, and so my question is, I do appreciate the reactive nature of trying to fix all of these issues, but what are, what are the proactive things that are gonna help grow our community? So for instance, um, you talk about the fire and, and police, and I agree, I think they should be paid compensated fairly for sure. But if there aren't residents moving here, businesses staying here, and there are people who wanna leave because they can't afford to live in this place, including all of those who work at those refineries who make all that money, then how are, how is this gonna fix a problem? It's just gonna be a cyclical issue of people leave because they can't afford to live here, which is gonna create more of a budget issue. So my question is, what part of these budgets are actually proactive in fit, in, in, in growing roads in the future rather than just reactive? Thank you.
Part of that would be this the minimums tax rate, uh, over the past, it's been tried to keep the tax lower and not go above any what's needed. And what that's done is it, it has made it comfortable for all these years. And now our proactive rate is, we need to fix things. Well, we have to get that money straight in order to fix things. We have revenues from water, sewer, and the citizens. Those are our three avenues for revenue. That's it. So that's what we're looking into. We're doing things with these budgets, and we don't like to do it, we don't wanna do it, but we're also all affected by it. All the water increases, myself and Paul have businesses that are gonna get hit. We live here, we pay the same taxes you do. I pay my water bill the same as you do.
Whenever Tommy lives here.
Everyone on this council lives here.
Yes, but
Everyone on this council lives here.
Your employees do not live here.
City employees, city employees do not live here.
That is not a requirement for employment that you have to live here, no, ma'am.
So, they don't have to pay the tax.
They have to pay their own city taxes.
I would say most of them do, most of them do.
So, to, to answer your question, what are we trying to do? We're trying to set ourselves up to get those funds straight to do some of the big jobs. Yes, Cleveland needs to be rebuilt. There's also failing drainage underneath it. Can't build the streets, then we fix the drainage. Probably fifteen, twenty million dollar job.
But how many years?
We don't have that.
How, what's the, what's the, uh, year like, in your opinion, like, to where we get to that point, we're back to stability?
The hope is to put things in place so that the people that are paying for it will reap the benefits.
That, that didn't answer the question, though. I mean, like, what's your projection? Like, is there a projection? You know, we have a street projection for finishing sixty nine and all this kind of stuff, like, what's a projection? Like, we're gonna deal with this, if we can tighten down for five years, ten years, that's our projection of to get it straight. Because I think if we can't, if we can't project that forward, then, then you're going to continue to lose the people who are helping fix that, which is gonna push that projection further and further. And I, I'm not aware of the projection, so that, that's my, I, I'm not mad, I'm just asking. In your opinion, what is the projected time that we have to go, okay, we can tighten this down a little bit, but this is what we gotta do, cause this is where we gotta get to?
I think part of that would be the water, the, the assessment of, uh, of the properties, what they would be taxed. But it's, that would give us some, it's a, yeah, technically, it's, it's not a tax.
It's a fee.
That's free, but the, uh, we will, we're in the process of applying for a grant that we will almost certainly get, that will pay for a comprehensive plan, this community base that will involve, uh, community meetings over some, four to six months. The, the end result of that would be a comprehensive plan that will address the very thing that you're saying.
So, we have to accept the budget that you're gonna vote on in a couple of weeks, in good faith that you have even a potential plan to get a projection, is what you're saying?
So, for, for some of those issues, yeah, yes, but right now, we have a water and sewer system that's failing.
And we've had that for a long time, so
And it's sprinkled, I mean, it's
Agreed.
People can't flush their toilets when it flood and when, when it rains.
Totally agree.
But we can't wait for some future day, we have to address that now.
Reactive, not proactive, that's what I'm saying.
We're playing the hand that we're dealt.
I totally understand that, and, and just voicing
This, this has been
Those regulated, in those regulated, regulated industries, water and sewer, we have to, cause if we don't, we get it fine, and then we still have to fix it, and then we have a fine on top of it.
But, but what is that, like, like a projection of years, or are we just arbitrarily throwing money at a problem with no end in sight?
No, and we, we have, uh, engineering that goes out for, uh, three to five years is, is reasonable projection. You can't go out further than that because prices, you know, have changed drastically in a matter of even two years. So we, you know what we're gonna, we plan to do in the next three to five years on the utility side. We do have that. What we don't have is the funding to make it happen.
If we have this new budget, three to five years is out in the road, you should be a lot better, if that will be good.
It will start addressing those, those issues. We, we're also applying for grants to address some of that.
Kevin, the increases in the water and sewer are on a five-year plan?
On a five-year plan.
On a five-year plan to fix the issues that end at the sewer water plant and to continue pipe bursting, which is gonna which is gonna fix the infiltration of groundwater into our sewer. So so that is in this budget. That is in this appropriation. Those fees to pay for that is in here. So that part of it is on a five-year plan.
This gentleman right here, your name is it Abbott, but I I don't didn't catch your last name?
Van Arsdale.
Van Arsdale, Mr. Van Arsdale. You said people can't afford to live here. Are you talking about the bankruptcy tax?
I'm talking about not stuff, not all stuff that is that is a a result of of this council or anything to do with roads. I'm talking, you you spoke about our economics two to three years. I'm talking the cost of living on the individual families have already skyrocketed, right? And then on top of that, then that's why there's this a personal uh emotional connection to any of the increases of anything. If at 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 a normal job, there's no pay rate increases regardless of what the rest of the nation feels if the if the uh if the production isn't there, you know, um unless you're just rolling in money and things like that. So uh that's just an example. I don't I don't know everything about all the budget. I'll I'll claim ignorance on all that for sure. Uh my question is, as a normal citizen who's not in the everyday uh uh portion of the council and the governing portions, all I see is I already can't afford to live here based off the economics of the world. And now on top of that, I'm now gonna have to pay even more to fix problems of things that that have been here since before I've been moved here. And and so I don't blame that on the council, and I appreciate that y'all are trying to fix that problem, but that's why I ask for is there a projection in sight? Because I can't afford to live here ten years from now as prices keep thinking and continue to increase, and nothing keeps getting better, except we get flashy stoplights and, you know, a painted rule side of the building. And which I I don't care. I'm fine with that. I don't really care about that. It's just those are hot topic things, but.
So what you're saying is that because of the because we're paying what triple for groceries and gases out of out of this world, the price for it and all, and the city adding fees and increasing water and sewer and all of that. Is this right?
And now my assets of my house and stuff are are going to be greatly lowered because in this economy, trying to sell so many art and trying to sell from a place that is known to be really in a deficit and charging these people more, it's 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 affecting every, you know, I have three young girls. They're all in school systems, you know. I work here. I live here. I love it here, but it is, it becomes, you know, difficult. And I don't make two hundred thousand dollars a year, you know, and I'm assuming that you guys do either. It's just, that's why I think everybody's here is it's like, we want hope, and it feels hopeless right now. Because that's that's what it feels like. And you can call them streets and stuff. That that doesn't matter to me when it's my my grocery money or or my kid's school, you know, uh uh material money or whatever it may be. It feels like, oh, well, one day it'll be fixed, but we just, we we don't know what. We're just, we're in a deficit. We gotta figure it out, you know? And that's why it's um there's emotional connections, all that.
We have um been dealing with prior difficulties, prior problems that were never fixed. They were never fixed. And so it accumulated and just snowballed and snowballed and snowballed until this is where we're at. From people prior to uh on city council, at least before I got on here, which was twenty twenty. And so looking at the problems we have financially and trying to fix like the wastewater plant and all that, which is really the biggest thing. Um Mr. Caruth has taken a hard line look at it to what we would have to do to bring our revenue up to be able to pay for these things in a way that we wouldn't have tremendous debt. Otherwise, otherwise it would be as was before, was proposed before, twenty seven fifteen million, twenty seven million, fifteen million to fix the wastewater treatment plant. We're trying to find ways to make a fund for streets that we could use that money for our streets, to fix our streets. That's what the street fee is. I don't like it either. I don't like any of this. I I'm not happy about it either, and I have to pay. I pay the taxes. I pay the fees. Um the water increases, I do that too. You know, unlike you, I don't make two hundred thousand dollars a year, don't live uh, you know, in big fancy houses. Um unlike you, I'm wondering, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna handle this? We've got to, Mr. Caruth has done, I think, his best to find a way to help us out in this mess, but it's gonna hurt. I mean, it's just gonna hurt. That's all that.
And I do appreciate that, and I appreciate, I'm not, I don't, I'm not upset at any particular person, any individual. And and honestly, my argument and my 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 frustration, I guess what I'm trying to say is rather than an explanation of every single line item, I'm begging you to make arguments for the hope of of growths.
You want a date, you want.
I not even that. I just want, I want an emotion that, hey, we love this city. We want to be a part of the city, like I believe you do. It feels hope, your people feel hopeless. And right now, and you're doing a better job, and I appreciate that. We we need to feel that that there is hope here. There's still love here. We are doing these things, and it sucks. I'm sorry. It sucks. I know it sucks, you know? But there's hope to live here. There's a reason to live here. This is still a great city. You know, that's that's what, like, I hope to come here tonight and feel not not a a a reactive argumentative, this is what we have to do to fix a problem that that you guys inherited, which, again, I I was aware of that, and I heard about that. I don't blame any of y'all for that, and I appreciate you not just passing the buck down. What we need is hope in whatever fashion that's supposed to look.
In in reality, we need to really look at this. Either we work over the next several years to to fix what was here. Uh if we don't, we look at the wastewater plant, we start getting fines and uh things of that nature. Now we're piling other debt on top of what we we have. And the the government isn't in your friend when it comes to that.
Oh, yeah.
Uh so now uh we we can't maintain our city. What happens? We get annexed by someone else. So either we do this hard work now so we can keep our city. Is it tough decisions to make? You bet. We discussed it before. It's either we do that or we lose what we've got. I'm not willing for someone else to take my city. I've I've been living here for forty forty-six years. Uh I know there's people been here a lot longer than that. Uh but uh that's reality. If if we don't do what we're doing right now, and I don't like it any more than than anyone else in here, but I I have no other other choice other than, okay, let it go. We're past the bucket. Let someone else take care of it. I'll spend my time and and go on. I'm not willing to do that. I'm gonna try to save what we want. I think we got some to uh to work for. Uh and it's gonna be some tough decisions that I'm not gonna like. And I think some of you won't like it, but we're gonna have to make those decisions if we want to continue to maintain our city. Uh and it's gonna take some work, and it's gonna take some time.
And the the two, three workshops that we've had in this process so far, uh staff and council has looked at every every time we had a workshop, what is the impact going to be on the the typical great payer taxpayer? Because we we care about that. We know it's gonna gonna take a bite. That has not ever been far from anyone's thought. But we also realize what the alternative is.
Where where does the city of Groves with our tax rate suit with needle and port nature split the surrounding cities? Are we somewhere in the middle, down a lower end?
I I don't know off the top of my head, and I do, I understand that uh the surrounding cities are also going up on their tax rate as well. So I don't know what we're gonna settle out, what we're gonna do, but we won't be on top, no.
Are they doing the de minimis rate? Do you know?
Uh no, I don't. I
They're just going up on the tax rate?
And Ne- Nederland or not, and the others are uh but by my, or if they're too large, be eligible for it.
Mr. Caruth, still?
Yes, ma'am.
I am, like you, the average taxpayer. And this is really hard. It's very difficult to make these decisions. I know people that will be affected by it. I will be affected by it. And it's very hard, but when you're faced with the decision of, if we don't do this, we're gonna have many, many problems in a few years, if not one year. And it's not gonna go by right. And how are we gonna fix it? We have um we have looked at many possibilities of how to do it, how to fix it. We don't want to overtax the people of this city. I don't. Like I said, I pay it too. And we have looked at many different ways of how to fix the wastewater. And we've adjusted some things to do it in a different way than it was done before and so that we don't have to take out a twenty seven million dollar uh loan for that. And the this study that we did that they're doing for the waste uh for the water rates and the sewer rates and all of that, um we know that it's going to increase your rate. It's gonna increase mine. And I've had problems with the water bill, just like many other people have. And um and I'm sorry, but we have we have really studied this out and tried to do everything we could um to fix the problems that we were given.
But can you explain the water bill thing? One car, five cars? What are they gonna do with that?
That's not on that's, you're talking about the street use fee. Well, we don't know. We haven't, we haven't gone down that road yet.
And there will be, there would be a
Stand.
There will be a, there will be a workshop for that.
Okay.
And that's
And we can attend.
Yes, ma'am.
In order to figure that out, we have to have a study. And we have to have recommendations that allow us or give us the information we need to make that decision.
I'm just, I feel like we're in the blind. Yeah, I'm just feeling like we're in the blind.
I I'm sorry you feel that way. You can call me anytime you want. I'm easy to find. I'm easy to get a hold of.
I would like to say too, please utilize us. That's what we're for. We we are, we are here for that. So please utilize it. But please do not lose, please do not lose hope. We are all up here trying to do the very best we can with the limited funds that we have because we have no industry. We don't have that tax-based industry coming in because we have no industry. And we're landlocked. We have nowhere else to expand. So I'm just gonna tell you, we're absolutely doing the best we can. We have, like she said, we've looked at at different scenarios, and nobody likes it. I don't like it. None of us up here likes it. But we all, we all have to pitch in to try to get this this city better. And and we're making, we're trying to make the best decisions we can in order to do that. And we know it's hard on everybody. We know that.
Uh this is the first year the de minimis has been used, right?
Yes, ma'am.
You're up.
Uh thank you, council members, uh for you guys' patience and perseverance uh with this budget season. Uh I know with Pardon?
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Brandon Holmes, forty thirty-three Redwood Street in Groves. Well, thank you, members, so much for for tack on this this challenging topic, uh especially as our country does go through things like inflation. Um and I know tackling a budget for a city like we have with an older infrastructure, older homes um can be a challenge. So I realize a lot of these things have to do with capital improvements. Um some of these things have to do with maintenance and the increase in maintenance costs. Um so a a couple of quick questions about the budget process. Um you guys, uh did did City of Groves hire a um a consultant to to assist with the financial planning of this?
No.
Um so call studies, uh projections for uh debt, paying the debt down. Uh people people are hitting on like, you know, how many years until we're out of debt, or how many years can we do this? Um so as far as outside help to say, hey, you know, help us see how much we're spending and how much we're bringing in. So we didn't hire an independent consultant to come.
Well, we did on the on the utility rate study.
Okay, gotcha.
The key to that is it costs money.
I I knew it costs money, yeah. They say it costs money to make money. Sometimes it costs money to save money.
Exactly right. Wait, wait these things out and
Okay, no, I'm, hey, I I've been here for five years. This is my first council meeting. So uh everybody got reared up, and so I decided I'd go see what's happening, and my wife's probably
Glad you came.
She said, are you gonna keep your mouth shut? And I said, I'm sorry, dear. Um so you guys had mentioned a work session, uh and that being on a YouTube video. Uh and City of Groves has a YouTube site. Um could I assume that, like, details of the hundred and sixty pages of what you guys went through are probably sprinkled throughout that that session?
Yes, sir.
So if we kind of wanted to know more about, you know, how how the bread is made per se?
The whole session is on YouTube.
It's like two hours and thirty-three minutes.
Amazing, yes. The meeting is on there as well as you can link to actually get the hundred and sixty pages.
Yeah, all budgets.
Oh, yeah, I reviewed the budget a couple of times over. Um and I appreciate you guys making that visible. We would do a download. And I know some people here tonight probably didn't get the opportunity to go and review that. Um there's a lot of line items and a lot of things we we have to do to support support this community. I get it. It's not just the roads. It's not just the sewer. It's the people. Um so I appreciate you guys, you know, addressing everyone's comments and and doing that patiently. Um we talked about three different sources of income. I think it was Mr. Kevin that said, uh water, sewer, and the citizens, right? Some some of that nature. Uh so those are the three income sources.
Sales tax.
Sales tax. It's paid by people, right? Or whoever. You don't have to be a citizen.
There's there's others that contribute to it, but those are your big ones, right?
Yeah.
And you And garbage fees.
Yeah. The people that live here, businesses that work here, you know, okay, and then that, there's not a big industry that we drive by that's in our city limits that says
They're all giving away and
I understand, yes. So and that blew my mind when I first moved here, and I understand that's something you guys inherited.
Well, technically, one half of the practice there is inside the city limits, as it said.
Uh so so a couple of quick questions. Are, is our city a a a size that we're eligible for some grant money? Uh I noticed somebody talked about some grant things. Do we have a person that that's one of their main focuses of seeking grants, a grant writer? Man, you got a lot of hats you wear, huh?
We also hire grant consultants.
Okay. And we could probably use part of the grants you received to work for us.
Self-funded work.
Mr. Caruth worked in the, Mr. Caruth worked in the grant industry.
Okay.
Probably a good draw with him.
Okay. I I knew, I I grew up in a village that became a township. Um and so I'm from a small place, and I understand, you know, how how other governments can help us.
At our last meeting of last year, last week, yeah, we we formed two of you, our fee for utilities, for two different brands.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Um I didn't get a s- a chance to go through the budget with a fine-tooth comb. There there are a significant amount of details, and there's lots of numbers in there, and those those are very thorough, and I appreciate that. Um someone asked a couple of times, so so we have a debt, right? With the City of Groves, we're in debt, you know, if we put everything and look at our balances, we owe people money. We're not just money rich, money in the bank. Um does the budget uh have a projection on when we would be out of debt? Or is that a goal?
There there's a a chart.
Um I I know there was some information, and I didn't know the exact details.
Chart with their debt profile.
Yeah, I I think the uh what type of debts we have, I know that was explained in there. Um
It also shows the payoff schedules.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. So the the next question, I'm sorry.
Mr. Honestly, he can tell you more about that.
Oh, that that's fine. That's perfect. Um the the minimum, the minus? I'm not letting, um so so that's a, that's something we have on our tax schedule already, or we don't have on our tax schedule?
There's ours. That's fair.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Yeah. Um so that's something that uh we can include or increase the minimums? The minus.
It's two words.
So, does, does the town charter or the uh, the state of Texas, whoever regulate that, does it say how often that can be increased or added?
The state says you're, you're.
Okay, so that can be reviewed yearly, correct? Uh, quick question, just because I'm a car guy. Mainly old trucks. Or, is it okay to ask some specific questions about the budget thing, or just in general? I, I don't wanna speak out loud.
Yes, I mean, I guess appropriation is the same as budget, just that's the part, that's your part, not the charter, so, yeah.
Uh, there, there was a line in there about company vehicles. And a proposal for, um, for leasing and long-term savings on that. Was that, uh, was that?
We approved the, uh, agreement with Enterprise for the first, uh, trial run for fourteen vehicles.
Perfect, that, that's what I just wanted to hear, trial. That's, that's, I've heard nightmares.
I believe it's five years.
It's a five-year term when we can look at.
Okay, but we're locked in year to year. With the five years, okay.
Yeah, we have fifty-eight passenger vehicles on the fleet. This is a trial run of fourteen.
No, I, I think that's, that's, that's wisdom, um. I've heard nightmares about, uh, governments leasing vehicles and, uh, not working around with customers, saying that that's a, that's a trial run. Well, guys, thank you so much for your patience. I, I know I got off in the weeds on some questions. Thank you very much for your service.
I, I appreciate you asking questions. Everything that's on social media is not necessarily true.
That's what I'm gonna ask right here. What did they say?
Every meeting that we have is on, is available for you, regular meetings, work, work sessions. If you go to the website, it'd be under, uh, agendas and minutes. And then there's YouTube click and it shows you every meeting we've had.
On the, on the homepage, there are like five radio buttons at the top. Then minutes is one of them, and it'll take you to that.
Okay, and I, I appreciate you guys, uh, making those things visible to us, us folks, um. Sometimes we have to go dig and you guys put the information there and some of us folks kinda just fumbling around, you know, looking to see what happened or what went down or what was really said, so. I appreciate, is this gonna be on there?
I'll also say that, uh, the budget also includes, uh, maybe for a new website that will be much more functional uh, than what we have right now.
So, um, so my, my, my last question on here, and I noticed the one that's on the website was updated as August first. Um, so, you guys voting to, to put that forward, is that August first gonna be the final proposed, or will that, is that a possibility of having amendments or changes, sir?
It's a possibility until your vote.
Up to the nineteenth, is that the separation? Okay. Hey, thank you guys very much. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I know you wanna leave, but. When I was, um, elected in twenty twenty, one of the first things that I asked for was a YouTube website for our, our, our meetings to be on YouTube, to be accessible to the people of this city. And, uh, I wanted new microphones and of course we got the television in the foyer so that the overflow can see and hear. Because so many people came to city council, I was one of them. I came to city council meetings over two years before I ever ran. And I couldn't hear city back there. So that was a big complaint and I wanted to get that fixed.
Yes, ma'am, and, and the microphone system, television is all very useful and professional and, you know, it lets, lets, lets us hear what's happening and see what's going on, so we appreciate that.
I think we spent fifteen thousand, I don't know, I'm not sure, some, somewhere around there to upgrade everything so that the people, um, could hear and see and, uh, go to YouTube, because let's face it, we all live on YouTube, so. Needs to be acceptable.
Well, thank you very much, ma'am.
As we were going through the budget, um, basically, uh, each department, there was line items that, that they had, what they were asking for, the department heads. And then, um, the city manager, what he would accept, which was, all of this is brought to us. And if they ask for ten dollars, they manually got four. I understand, uh, that I, and the three and a half years I've been in here, I've never seen it set up like that. And he, he, he went, went through and upset some of his, his people. And he, he did some pretty hard adjustments. Uh, I can, I can honestly say that.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, we've gotta do our part, he's working on, on his part, and he showed it to some black and white. So I'm always very, very impressed with that.
The budget was much easier this year to go through than it had been in previous years. If you want a copy of this stuff, can email it to you.
That's, uh, her, her department?
Yes. Just.
Okay, thank you very much.
City of Groves, City of Groves, um, my email should be on the website.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Call Clarissa.
That, that's fine. If I can't scan through the hundred and sixty pages and, and read between the lines.
Is on there.
That's fine. I mean, I've got a half dozen questions from different, different sections in the budget, but I don't need to, I don't need to ask any of those. You, you guys.
We'd like to know what the departments asked for and what Mr. Caruth approved.
Oh, I don't need to see that, no, ma'am. I appreciate that. Oh, no, no, thank you very much. I'll let those, let those departments head serve, uh, those employees and that infrastructure and, you know, request everything they can because they want, you know, quality of service and quality of life of those people, and just like you guys were talking about with, you know, people leave because the pay rate is not competitive with the, the other areas. And, and I understand that. You have to, uh, sometimes have a love for a place and, uh, not care about your pocketbook, you know, and how much money you're bringing in, and that's, you know. Sometimes that's what makes citizens, you know, stay here is the love, or I've heard that so many times over. The lady that's been here for over four years, she loves the city, um. She doesn't like the state that is here and she's in her voice and her opinion and the way, the way that she sees things. And I appreciate you guys, uh, sticking with this budget process and answering each part of everyone's questions that have been coming in, so. Thank you guys very much.
Add to it, understandably, people are focused on the revenue side, it doesn't, the, you know, pocketb- pocketbook issues. But we also eliminate, we're eliminating three positions in this budget. We're reducing staff size by three down to a hundred and forty-five total. So, we, and that follows two previous years, the last two years before the, on the proposed budget, the current year and the year before, we're also eliminating positions. So we've continued to eliminate personnel. Uh, and that's the best way to cut down on expenses.
Well, that and the grants, um, different things that help us with the fire department, the police department. Marshall, uh, Robin knows about that, all the grants that we use to help get radios and different things. So we utilize every avenue we possibly can to help us with the finances.
Tanner Thompson, forty-nine sixty-one Beaumont Avenue, Groves, Texas, seven seven six one nine four two. Uh, so I moved to Groves in twenty twenty and I bought my first house, which was located at sixty-eight ninety-nine Jefferson Boulevard. Uh, I purchased the house, it was in very poor condition and been updated since probably the fifties. And so I have avocado green appliances and carpets in it, I'm sure some of y'all are familiar with that. I invested forty thousand dollars of my own hard earned money into that house and it went from being appraised at eighty thousand dollars to the day that I sold it, it was appraised at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, I invested a lot of money, a lot of money into the city. So I've already invested a lot of money on my first property and the tax rate on that property is now increased to two hundred thousand dollars. So with my investment, the city has earned tenfold on the tax rate. I then purchased another house, which is where I currently live at, which is a forty-nine sixty-one Beaumont Avenue. And within a year of living there, the appraised value of my home was raised seventy thousand dollars. Seventy, not seventeen, seventy. Uh, so therefore my tax rate again increased in City of Groves, which I know that y'all don't set the appraised values for the homes, but that is my investment into the city so far. Uh, with that being said, y'all are talking about the tax rates between the three cities that we can all admit compete against each other. Uh, Groves, Cornetius, and Nederland. Nederland has the lowest tax rate of the three cities. Cornetius allows your homestead exemption to take effect on your city taxes. Groves does not. If Cornetius has a higher tax rate, it's probably not that much. But the current Texas law allows a hundred thousand dollar tax exemption for your homestead exemption. Therefore, probably significantly lower than the Groves tax rate. What I think everybody is upset about with all this being said is where has this money been going? I know personally, again, when I bought my second house I live in now, I paid five hundred and fifty-some odd dollars over on my water bill in the last eighteen months. The city did a, uh, a review of my account and they determined that I paid five hundred and fifty dollars over in eighteen months. Thankfully, they reversed it and to where basically I'm not paying my water bill until I've reached the five hundred and fifty dollar deficit I was in. Maybe y'all can tell me yes or no, but I was told shortly after moving to the City of Groves that the former city manager, De Sosa, applied and was given a grant to install, uh, water meters throughout the entire city, all new water meters. Is that correct? Okay. Why was there such a problem with the water meters and why were they never addressed?
They have a, they have a life expectancy on the every side of it. And that, that only affects the avail- the availability of it to be read remotely. The meter still turns.
So how was I being over billed? A hundred dollars a month.
You were probably being estimated. And when you got a true read, an actual read, you were given the credit back.
It took them eighteen months to give me a true read. I live two seconds away from the water.
Because we do remote monitoring, we don't have people anymore that go and read meters every single day. They only read the ones that they find out are broken and then they can get to them. Now, we're working consistently right now that we will not be estimating water bills for longer than maybe a month or two. That is what we put in place now. That is what we've requested. We don't want estimations anymore.
I don't think anybody in the city.
But the meter still reads true.
Okay.
You just can't read it from a truck. You have to go and visually put your eyes on it.
So how come every month the lid on my water meter was laying in my grass, not even placed back on the meter box, but it was being read remotely?
Yes.
So the truck has a magnet that takes the lid off?
I have a house that, that the lid is gone. Every time I cut grass, it's not on there. And the water's not even turned on in that house. So I can't tell you how the lid got off of there. But I can tell you is we are trying to fix the meter problems and have a life expectancy. We're, we replace them as fast as we can get them in.
And we appreciate that, but, like I said, I think everybody's upset because there's been so many problems in the city for so long, and now we are paying the price yet again. We have been paying the highest tax rate. We have been paying an astronomical water bill. We don't even have, I, I don't like talking about the labor guys, but my trash can is laying down broken every single week. The, the lid on the trash can is almost gonna snap off completely. When I used to work twelve-hour shifts and my wife would get home pregnant before me, she had to dig up the trash can off the road, out of the ditch. I have a sinkhole forming in my ditch that the water department came out last time we had a freeze when the pipe busted, and I asked them to address it and he said he would send somebody out, and that was almost a year ago. You can hear the water running into the, the hole that's about as big around as your fist, like it's ten to twenty feet deep. It sounds like a waterfall in my ditch. The road that I live on is one, is a very small road, you can almost call it a dead end. My block is three or four houses long. I'm basically the only house on my side of the block. But the traffic that's there during the school pickup and drop off, I can't even leave my house at that time. Can't back out of my driveway, can't do anything because the road is so narrow and due to all the traffic on the road that's not meant to be driven down that much, it is in horrible condition. There's potholes that cover the, the entire road to pothole, more or less. It, it's horrible. You can't, you could barely ride a bike or skate down the road. You just fall on your face from tripping on, from the rock and stuck in the wheels. Wilson Avenue, between Thirty-Ninth Street and Taylor Boulevard is, it's like an off-road park. Y'all redid, I guess, the infrastructure, the drainage infrastructure there about eight months ago, correct? The road repair afterwards, I don't know if the city did it or if it was a company that did it, but it's a joke of a repair. I mean, it's, it's, does this the whole way. It's horrible. It look, it's, it's patchwork. I don't understand, I understand that there, there's a budget, there's only so much money you can spend, and there's only so much money you have and it costs this much. But if you spend so much money on the infrastructure and then you ship out on the, on the roadway that's on top of it, if you're beating up the road that bad, you're beating up the infrastructure. The infrastructure's gonna fail and half the time it's meant to last. And then now your art investment, the citizens' investments into their own streets and infrastructure has now failed sooner than it should have. And now we're gonna have to pay again for the same places to be repaired. Y'all say y'all don't have money to do anything with and y'all have to tax us more. We already paid to the city taxes. We already paid a utility bill. Our city taxes are supposed to cover street and road and ditch repairs. That's why we pay city taxes. Why are you gonna give us another road fee? We paid for the roads to be fixed already. I understand that this is not y'all's fault, but you're making us pay for something we're already having to pay for? That's not fair. That's not fair to anybody. I understand y'all have to pay it too, but it's, it's not right. It shouldn't be done. We never should've gotten here. There should be another way that we're looking at fixing this. Like you said, y'all are looking at grants. Apply for every grant imaginable. There's so many cities that don't take advantage of grants. The, the money's out there, it's free. All you have to do is report the required information monthly or yearly or quarterly. And they will keep handing you money and over this. I work in city government, I understand how it works. I understand grants, I understand budget, I understand collective bargaining agreements. But the way this has been being done is unacceptable. And the, the revenue that y'all said y'all can only generate through utility bills sewage, garbage. Y'all are generating revenue through y'all's taxes on y'all's citizens. And there's laws that y'all need to enforce on these roadways that y'all are gonna double taxes on with golf carts, four-wheelers, dirt bikes, go-karts, mini bikes, that y'all don't have city ordinance for. There's not a city ordinance in the City of Groves to allow golf carts to be driven. I'm not against golf carts being driven, but if they're breaking the law, the law needs to be enforced. If your officers are writing citations, that generates revenue for the city. And it is illegal to operate any off-highway vehicle, any U T V or A T V or side-by-side on any city streets, and y'all allow it. And then out there driving down my street alone and then tears up the school district's field right next to my house day in and day out is ridiculous. We also pay taxes for that, that school. We pay taxes for them to cut the grass there. They're there twice a week. It's their, and they're contracting it out. If they're paying what the Nederland I Steve's paying, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for the yards, the, the yards to be cut, somebody should be helping protect those yards, which is the people that enforce the laws in this city. And y'all can adopt or get rid of the ordinance that prevents our homestead exemption from taking effect on our city taxes. And I would ask y'all to adopt or get rid of the ordinance that prevents that from being done.
Mister Thompson, um, before Mister Caruth came and Mister Sosa was here, I brought that same issue up to city council, to Mister Sosa. I brought that same issue up to city council, to Mister Sessa. About the homestead exemption and why we don't give it to the people of our city. And I was told it's just the way it is. It's always been that way. Um, that was before Mister Caruth came. When Mister Sessa was here, because um, I was approached about that too. And I wondered about it because I deal with the tax assessors also. I called, I protested my taxes.
Man's law.
They raised mine fifty thousand dollars this year, my appraisal. And I had to deal with them on that. Uh, and then they told me, well, you can blame city council for that. And so I said, oh, really? Okay, tell me more. And so uh, anyway, she said, you don't have a homestead exemption act. On your property taxes because Groves refuses to give you that.
Correct.
So I asked about it and I was told we just don't do that. Now. If we were to give, and correct me, if I'm wrong, Mister Ossler probably knows this. If we were to do the home ex- homestead extent, extent. Sorry, um, then that would take, that would decrease our property taxes, right?
But it does property taxes.
I don't mean, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't mean give a, uh, the rate. I'm talking about the revenue from it. I'm talking about. The money we get from it. Now you do know, I mean, I'm sure you do, but on your uh, adjustment campaign appraisal. When you get it. When I, and I have dealt with this with many people.
I protest, protested mine as well.
Yeah, uh, I only look, I, I'm, when I'm thinking about Groves and what we're doing in Groves, I look at the Groves line. Not District Seven, not Independent School District or Fort Natures. I pay property taxes in Fort Natures too. I pay them here, I pay in Fort Natures too. So I have to look at all of that, okay, um. School taxes, everything over there. So I wanted to find out this, it was before Mister Caruth came, it was Mister Sessa was here. Yes, and I'm not sure exactly which year it was, but. If we have a decrease in revenue from the property tax. What are we gonna do with that?
That is, it's a catch twenty-two, but we have been paying, like I said, no, I, I know the question and it's. I agree. If we stop paying, if we keep paying, if, if we start paying less, y'all will have less money to work with.
I would like for us to be able to have a homestead.
But we've, but like I said, the problem is that everybody has today. The reason everybody is here right now is. As I just provided the information, y'all, we have been paying the highest tax rate out of all three cities. And if you drive around Groves and you drive around Fort Natures and you drive around Nederland, you would never guess it. And we're wondering where that money has been going to where now we have to be paying even more. So we're gonna continue to pay a higher tax rate than the two cities that are in the highest competition. It, nobody can ch- shy away from that. Everybody knows city wise, when it comes to the city hiring. And employment and pay, Fort Natures, Groves and Nederland are in competition with each other. So we're already paying a higher tax rate. For the City of Groves and then y'all are gonna give us another fee to use the roads that we're already paying a higher tax rate to drive on. That is what's unfair. That is why if you're gonna tax me more, give me a break. We're already being taxed higher by the county. We're gonna be ta- ha- taxed higher by y'all. And if y'all didn't know, I just, for everybody here. Groves out of the three cities, when for home insurance is the highest rates out of all three cities. And it begs you to, begs you to ask the question, why is that? We don't live any closer to the, to the beach. We're not anymore wide open. Gr- Fort Natures is right on the river. Why aren't they paying a higher tax rate? It begs you to ask, is it because of the way our infrastructure, our infrastructure looks? When the insurance agents and adjusters drive around and have to go do their adjustments for claims and they see what it looks like and they report it back. To the insurance companies. If your in- infrastructure is in poor condition, you're gonna get more flooding, even in zones that aren't flood zones.
If you're speaking in terms of flood or fire, uh, insurance. When you say the premium, there, there's flood and.
It's all of it. If they, if they look at the infrastructure.
But when you buy insurance, flood insurance is, it stands.
Correct, but insurance as a whole is raises their rates no matter what it is because of the cost that it is in that city. To do repairs or how many claim, claims that they have versus the next city over. Why would Groves be more expensive? Do you have an answer other than infrastructure problems?
One of, one of the things, I, I guess, uh. What you're, part of what you're, you're talking about is where's the money going? To, to be able to bring these costs down. It was spoke a while ago, we do not have any industrial industry, but Fort Natures, and I wish we did. Uh, Mister Caruth, I think you had done some research uh, coming in, in nineteen fifty-three. We had the opportunity to uh, ex- uh, your Fender refinery. Council back then chose not to do that. That shut the door on this city. Being able to, to have that.
Right, which makes sense why you would have a higher tax rate, but if you drive around the city, you don't see that, okay?
The other thing is we're fixing to order or have ordered a new fire truck to the tune of.
Water point two million.
Okay, if we don't do that. Then the pr- the premiums for everybody that lives in this city goes up. We keep the ones we've got. And keep using them because they look brand new. They keep them out very well. But our, our premiums are gonna go up if we don't spend that one point two million.
Spend it. I'm a first responder. I'm never gonna deny spending money on first responders.
We're gonna end up putting the burden back on, on the people that live here. So it is.
But we pay either way. We pay either way. Insurance.
That's what everybody's frustrated about is we're paying for somebody else's problems and we're already pa- paying premium rates.
When you say someone else's problems, you're talking about because it wasn't fixed all these years?
Correct. I'm not blaming y'all for what happened. I understand that y'all are dealt a bad hand.
You, you understand that we have two options. We can either say we quit. And we don't fix anything and we give you back your lowest tax rate that you possibly want. Or we make the decision to fix the things with whatever we have to do to fix. You're giving me problems. You're not giving me solutions. So our solution is, we're looking at it. We're gonna do what it takes to try to fix these things in a timely manner. And unfortunately, the money has to come from somewhere. It, it comes from us, it comes from the citizens. And it comes from the ways that we generate revenue from the city. I get it. You wanna lower tax rate. It's not gonna happen. It's not.
We want, we want something to show for our tax rate.
Then give us a chance to spend the money. We can't do it without the money.
But why do we have to pay fifty thousand dollars for y'all to go get this audit or whatever you wanna call it done by the company that's gonna enforce.
It's a great study so that we know exactly how to implement things.
To be fair.
But why doesn't every other city have to do that? Every other city does not charge you a road fee.
That, okay, again, that is not in this. So do you wanna talk about something else?
I just have one more thing. It's not, not combated, um, uh. This is a marathon issue, obviously not a sprint. Um, with that said, there, there has to be give and take. In what ways do y'all see incentivizing? Businesses to stay and new businesses to come, which will ultimately um, help our community better than it will hurt it. Um, so in what ways in budget or in your mindset, you, can we incentivize? Um, those businesses from leaving or, or do y'all plan uh, anything from that aspect of it?
Ob- obviously, having instruct- the infrastructure improved. Uh, having the uh, I S O rating for fire improved. Which we were pretty confident we can, the next rating cycle, we can improve that by one percent. Uh, we are uh, in the process of uh, beginning of um. Flood program. Which right now we're at ten on the FEMA system. We, we should be able to get that easily up three or four. Spots, so that will save people on their flood insurance. Uh, we have an E D C that uh, helps local businesses with their advertising, uh, their facade improvements.
Signage.
Signage, I'd be.
Landscaping, things that beautify the outside of the business.
The comprehensive plan I mentioned earlier, uh, will provide a lot of direction. Uh, like I said, it's community based, so that shouldn't bring. People together to have a common vision. But it's unfortunately gonna take time. Nobody has magic wand, right?
My name is Stacy Fitzgerald.
Hi Stacy.
Um, six thousand Terrill Street. I know that obviously y'all didn't get the best handout with y'all and I understand that. Um, I've been in Groves for the last thirty-four years in business. And you got the numbers, you know, who we need. Anyway, um, I understand everything goes up. I really wish. I see you, Mister Caruth. I really wish though, if we were gonna have imposed water increases and things like that. As a business, and I know I'm gonna be affected, but as a business person, could y'all send out something? Because as y'all are trying to fix problems, they're what, twenty years? Not y'all's fault. I'm trying to keep up every day. So as a business that pays here. It would be nice to have, hey, just like I guess Texas gas just sent us an increase, everybody's sending increases. As for us to know, to be aware, to budget those things in, so when we do our budgets, it gets. Again, passed through. Um, I know y'all, everybody's gotta make more money. I know in order to improve our city that I've been here giving back to for the last thirty-four years. That's the only way we're gonna get to where we need to be. I do understand that we have E D C money. Um, and unfortunately, I think there's laws that y'all can't combine that in to help with your budget, correct? There's some, I guess, but there are E D C money to help other businesses come back and help with the. With the budgets and things like that. It's not just on the burden of a, of the few businesses that are here. Is that correct?
I mean, anyone that has a urgent order can apply for E D C funds.
It's for existing businesses and for incentivizing new businesses.
And I mean, do we have anything that helps us kind of promote that?
Yeah, I do. I do, I promote it, I promote it to businesses. Um, I send out applications all the time to businesses. Um, I don't always get them back, but E D C is.
And you, you go door to door. Like you done door to door.
Oh, I have done that, yes, absolutely. But it's been so hot the last month or so, I just. It's just too hot, but yes, I haven't gone to many businesses.
I'm not, I'm not here to come bust y'all in the mouth. I understand. I understand. Every one of y'all need to make more money. I understand. I love my. I call mine the fire department. I love the police department. They are all wonderful people and everybody deserves to make more money. It's just. I would like the, I guess, um. Notification, hey, we're gonna increase the penalty or. I'm not much of YouTube and I'm not much of on websites because I really don't have time for that. But it would be nice that we get that information towards, I mean, how many businesses do we have in the City of Groves?
Three hundred and eighty-six.
Okay, so you know, I mean.
Want us to know you something?
I mean, that would be great. Send it across my war bill. Hey, we're going up or there's a city council meeting that we're fixing to.
Well, we meet every other week and during, by the time we meet, basically, almost three times a week.
I understand.
This is our sixth meeting.
My place don't close until six o'clock. I understand. But those are the things that I'm trying to understand is maybe as a courtesy or I just need to scroll the web every day for. Um, the penalties because those are some big penalties and it's gonna affect businesses in the city. And these are big concerns, not just for me, but you know, for people that do have to do the things that we're required by law to do. So I understand I wasn't made aware um, about the imposed uh, limits on water. You just get to hear and sometimes it's not always good stuff. Um, that's why you never know what's really the truth or what isn't, but. It's nice to know out of the three hundred and eighty-five that, I mean, I have three brick and mortar places here.
Is that his phone going on?
Yeah.
Stacy, on the E D C, I can email you or come see, uh, bring you an application. We have um, uh, funds available for signage, for advertising. Uh, improvements to your property and assets, security lights, security cameras.
I've done every bit of that and I haven't asked for a dollar. And the reason why is because I know we need more businesses here. I do get it.
So that's what the E D C money is for.
We'll give it to somebody that comes in and wants to start here in Groves. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's where I'm at.
And then just so you know, the, the new website will have a subscription. So you can sign up as soon as something is posted, meetings or uh, a, a notice.
It'll send you anything. Perfect. Perfect. Well, I do appreciate y'all moving forward on the infrastructure. I promise you, I'm one of those people that do have a problem at both of my facilities and I get it. I've been here long enough. I get it. Um, let's just keep moving forward.
We talked to this studio.
Um, I own Kids Harbor on, um. Yeah, Terrill and, and um, Knowles, et cetera, this is when I started thirty-four years ago, so. Anyway, thank you guys.
Bailey Thompson, forty-nine sixty-one, Baltimore Avenue. Um, I originally wrote a letter, but it was, it's. I was kinda mad when I wrote it. But and the things that I wrote about have been talked about um, kind of a lot already, but I just wanna touch on them. So my background is finance, local government and grants. So that's really why I'm here today. Um. Up until today, I didn't really know that City of Groves had taken advantage of many grants, but obviously we need to because we need the money. Um, I was just wondering if maybe we could have like a workshop or I, I don't know, like a newsletter or something that lets the citizens know. Um, all the grants that we have applied for, the grants that we got. I know Mister Born, you said that um, the infrastructure under Cleveland is really bad and needs to be torn up. I know for a fact that there are grants that we can get to pay for that. And in turn, because you have to tear up the road to replace that stuff, then they'll also pay to repaint the road. Um, really for grants like that. And you mentioned RFPs, that's right at the valley. Uh, so I know that we don't necessarily, or we may not have the qualified personnel or just like the manpower to grant right. And a lot of people think that it's really easy. It's not. It, it takes a lot, um, a lot of research, a lot of different documents, all kinds of things. Um, and you said that there, y'all are, you know, we can get with like um, different agencies to help with that. I just, if you could maybe. Um, I guess inform us a little bit more of what we are doing. That might help people not be so angry. Um, but that's it. That's all I have.
Anyone else who wishes to speak against the request?
Are we still on appropriation?
We are still on appropriation. Call this one last time. Anyone who wishes to speak against the request? Okay, no issue will be taken at this meeting. We will meet infinitely, um, and then we will. Also do this on the nineteenth. Go. Now we will move into. The budget, which is required by the state. Notice, notice here, by giving that City Council of Groves, Texas will hold a public hearing one day, August fifth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, being City Hall thirty-nine forty-seven, Main Avenue, Groves, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. This budget will raise money or raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by six hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-one. Or eight point six three percent. And of that amount, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year. All of the other stuff is the same. So do we have any questions from City Council? At this time? Or is there a second you need to make the mark? This is the actual budget, sort of required by the state. Okay, anyone who wishes to speak in request, or in favor of the budget? Right. Anyone wish to speak against the budget, the request for the proposed budget? Last call.
I want to.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm already getting my name, Nancy Seagars, sixty-five hundred thirty-second Street. Um I was just wondering on the budget and all, um we know that, like you said, the police and the fire department are the most in that budget and all. Um and then the employees, and it was talking about. So with the employees and all, do they, I mean, is it, and who is included on that? Is it department heads that are getting the five percent raise on one?
Everyone that's not in a C B A on their own. So every city employee that is not under a collective bargaining agreement.
Right.
Which are the police and fire department.
And so.
And not already topped out, or under specific contract, right?
Right, then. So I know usually a cost of living is three percent and all, that uh I work for the state, and that's why I get my three percent every day, every year and all, which is very good. And I am thankful for that, because I worked twenty years in nursing homes, and I worked for companies that they didn't make their money. And we didn't get raises for five years or so. And so I think some of maybe, I don't know. I know it's gonna be hard on the the Groves employees, maybe to cut it down some or so.
And and I will agree with you that, and if this was a colder year, City Council would vote on the amount of the cost of the living rates. It is not a set five percent.
Okay.
Now, these steps, which are outlined in the hiring packets, I'm assuming, right, for each individual position, those steps are defined by five percent. And this is a step year. So you don't get to vote on.
On those raises and like that, but then next year.
Will be a cost of living year, and yes, we approve the percentage and or not given on it all.
Right. Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Miss Seagars, that lady that's sitting behind you, Stephanie, she may be able to answer some.
Anyone else wish to speak against the request for the proposed budget? All right. Uh no action will be taken. This will be done at a later date for August nineteenth. And that is the end of the public hearings. Uh I'm fourteen, uh councilor compliments.
I would like to say, I do appreciate each and every one of you coming out. I mean, we're all citizens here, and I appreciate your patience. And I will appreciate your continued patience in us trying to try and do our thing for our city. We're all here for the same reason, to try to help. That's the only reason we got on here. And uh we're doing the best we can with what we can, but I appreciate all of you doing.
Um yeah, I'd like to echo that. I wanna thank everyone of you that have come out, and those that left. I thank them too. I really like hearing your opinions, and it helps us to know what you're thinking, what your neighbors are thinking, what's on their mind, and I appreciate it. I'm glad you came. So thank you.
Thank y'all as well. It's uh good to be able to hear back from the other side. May not like what we hear, but at least we we know someone's listening. With the effort that that we try to put, put here. Uh so thank y'all as well. Speaking your your points, I love that statement.
I look forward to seeing y'all again on the nineteenth.
Yeah, we'll see you then. It's the nineteenth.
That being it, we will adjourn this meeting at six fifty-four.